Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the city of Prattville this evening. We have one public hearing tonight, and then we'll move into our council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merritt.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Counselor B.
Having a quorum present, I will read in public hearing item number one. Item number one is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an economic development agreement between the city of Prattville, Otoga County, and the Water Works Board of the city of Prattville and Owens Corning in support of Project Magnolia. Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in favor of resolution number one? May I ask our economic developer to please come forward and give some remarks and information
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. Just a few comments. You'll see the drawings on the screen, two renderings. These were provided by the company, and this is the expected look. No, the buildings will not be pink, but as you, as I'll explain, their mascot is the Pink Panther, so therefore, in these renderings, they do use pink. During the past nine months, the city of Prattville, Otoga County, and the state of Alabama have been in a competitive process to recruit Owens Corning to the community. This process began with forty states and more than forty-five communities, and was narrowed down according to needs and functions of the assets for a new Owens Corning greenfield facility. Prattville's South Industrial Park location made it to a finalist spot in January of 2025, and to a final three-spot in March of 2025. From information, discussion, in-person visits to the site, and other resources in the community, Owens Corning selected the South Industrial Park for the first greenfield project for the Owens Corning Roofing Division in history. This project represents a $325 million investment from the company, with more than 100 jobs currently, and additional jobs planned for the future. The project will encompass 190 total acres along Bowen Way and County Road Four in the South Industrial Park. Economic development projects are a partnership and investment to grow the community's ability to offer strong, full-time jobs. The state, city, and county have pledged abatements, partial land, and received nearly $5 million to date in grants to bring this industry to our community. Owens Corning will have five rail tracks and transport more than 175 trucks per day of product all over the United States from right here in Prattville, Alabama. As the single largest initial investment in the history of the city of Prattville, I proudly submit to you Project Magnolia as hopefully our next industry to locate in Prattville and Otoga County. I would welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Do any of the counselors have questions for Ms. Hilliard regarding Project Magnolia? Mr. Whaley?
Just one.
Sure.
Well, just, I guess, a comment and then a question. So, I've received a lot of people reaching out about, hey, y'all are giving everything away to get an industry, and I'm technically for doing what it takes to provide new jobs in our community. I think that's good. Ask a few questions. I realize that what we are abating is property tax and then taxes that deal directly with the construction. Once the plan is up and operational, that affects their revenue, and that affects our business license revenue that we will come in. And I know we don't know exactly what that is right now.
That's right.
But I just want to point out that we will, we will receive revenue, and, you know, we have land that we're not getting anything off of right now. It's just sitting there. We're not, we're not collecting any kind of taxes from it, so abating the property tax portion of it, non-school-related. So, the school board will actually get a relatively large sum of money from the property tax in comparison to what is going there for that property right now, which is nothing. The only question I have is, when it comes to the city providing the rail or working with them for the rail stuff, are there grants and things available that we're looking at to help cover the cost of that?
Yes. So, part of the $5 million in grants from growing Alabama, 3.4 million of that is to assist in a portion of the rail. The company will be responsible for the remaining dollars of the rail. So, we will have nothing above the grant dollars that have been awarded already.
Okay. So, we're not asking to use taxpayer money for that. We're using the company's money and grant money.
You're exactly right.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Do any other counselors have any questions for Ms. Hilliard tonight? Thank you so much for your comments. We are still in our public hearing portion. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of Project Magnolia? Is there anyone present tonight who wishes to speak against resolution number one? Ms. Finnegan, please come forward, state your name and address. You will have three minutes to address the council.
I'm gonna sign in afterwards, okay? I'm not so much against it, because I know it's already a done deal. The thing is that on September 30th, as you are aware, the legal ad was in the paper for this public hearing, and in it, it stated the incentives for this project, and I'm gonna read those. An abatement of noneducational ad valorem property taxes on personal and real property associated with the project for a period of ten years; an abatement of noneducational sales and use taxes, and similar taxes related to project construction; an abatement of deed, mortgage, and all other similar recording taxes; a waiver of any fees associated with A) the granting of documents for tax abatements; B) site plan review; C) building plan review; D) grading permit; E) land subdivision application; F) initial impact or TAP fees for the project's initial wastewater connection and initial water service; and G) TAP fees for a four-inch line; number five, the entering into a ground lease for real property for less than fair market value; six, the transfer of title by the city to real property for less than fair market value; seven, entering into a lease for office space during the construction for less than fair market value; eight, payment assistance and in-kind contributions by the city for initial hiring of employees to develop the project; nine, certain in-kind contributions by the city related to rail line improvements; and ten, certain in-kind contributions and direct payments by the city related to infrastructure improvements. So, I read the resolution, and it has one paragraph that says, "Whereas the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, the city council has been asked to approve an agreement for use and grant of public funds and things of value, the agreement to Owens Corning, the corporation." The thing that bothers me is there's absolutely no money in that resolution. We have no idea what we're giving away. And granted, yes, we're gonna have this big company, hopefully, who knows, with the state of the economy that America's in right now, who knows? But you have absolutely no money. We citizens have no idea what is gonna be expended, except what Amy said about the rail line. And I know CSX said they're gonna get into that. But anyway, my thing is that it's just, I feel citizens should know what we're gonna be giving out. There's a lot of people around here that probably could use that money in businesses, infrastructure, whatever. But I'm just, I'm astounded, and, you know, you can say, well, it's gonna be in the agreement. Well, that's after the fact. That's closing the barn door after the horses are out, you know? So, anyway, that's my, that's my take.
Thank you for your comments. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council, and you will have three minutes to address us.
Alyssa Brown, 2022 Summit Parkway. I'm just gonna piggyback off of her and just say, here's what we know about Owens Corning. Their total net sales were $11 billion. Earnings before interest and taxes were $430 million. So, basically, what the city is deciding in a nutshell is Owens does not pay sales and use taxes on both personal and property, real property, including construction-related expenses, with the exception of education-related and ad valorem expenses, for ten years. For ten years, no taxes, basically no sales tax. Additional tax breaks include no mortgage deed or recording taxes, plus waivers for fees related to permits, reviews, and services such as water and leasing. Owens is also benefiting from purchasing below-market property cost, discounted temporary office space during construction, and various other forms of support like professional services, equipment, and hiring assistants. It's also mentioned that amendment number 772 to the U.S. Constitution of Alabama authorizes the city to lend credit or grant public funds and things of value to any business entity, including small local businesses, not just corporations, to promote economic development for the city. So, where is the support for our small businesses? I want to remind everyone again, we are, we're told in Project 2040, for the millionth time, it feels like, locally grown businesses recirculate two to three times more of their revenue into the local economy compared to national chain businesses. I have that recited in memory. I don't even need to read that at that point. I want to remind everyone again, like here, well, not again, but everyone here and those listening in later, posting on social media is not enough. Saying you support small businesses means nothing compared to, you know, when you don't follow it up with actions. I'm so tired of hearing people say things and not be true to their words. So, we just need to work better on that. And, I mean, come on, these small businesses are the backbone of our economy. I don't understand why we can offer these incentives to billion-dollar corporations, but yet, we struggle, and we're just like, oh, we just support our local businesses here and there, and just, you know, make a little nice post. But anyways, a yes vote signals that a deal that goes against local business owners again and contradicts the value behind Project 2040. A no vote proves you stand with your constituents and the local businesses you claim to support. Please vote no to this resolution. As we know, this is very up in air. It seems like there's a lot of things that are gonna go on after the fact, after you agree to this. So, just vote no for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Next, please come forward, state your name and address for the council, and you will have three minutes to address us.
Good evening, Reverend Dr. L. White II. I come to you to ask you about this, this resolution. We bringing in another company. Do we know they gonna even pay a living wage?
Mr. White, you understand this is a time for you to speak to us, not a time for us to react to you.
I already knew it. It was a rhetorical question, because I know, since I've been here the whole entire time, if I ask you an intellectual question, you give me the deer in the head like, look. So, I'm expecting that anyway. But the people need to know, are we bringing businesses in that gonna give them a living wage? A living wage, not just barely making it, but a living wage. Y'all know how much it costs for apartments around here, and God knows, we won't bring affordable housing in to this area. So, but we can give millions of dollars in tax breaks, but we can't help our citizens that live and work hard day-to-day. We really need to think about this as a group. Really need to think about, how can we better improve and help our citizens? If you're not thinking that, you're not doing any justice for the citizens of Prattville. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak on resolution number one in our public hearing this evening? Hearing none, I call the public hearing closed. This time, we'll invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation which will be given by me tonight.
(Inaudible) flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, so privileged to be here. We ask that your presence fill this chamber. We ask for your wisdom, for your guidance, for your peace, for clear thinking, for clear speaking, and for just a night where we conduct much business that is to your pleasing. We lift up Counselor Stritchett, who is absent from us tonight because he is under the weather. We just pray that you would touch his body and heal him quickly, so he may return to his everyday activities and return to working with us at the city. We just pray that you would bless the city with safety, that you will take care of our first responders as they go out into situations where they're, under your protection. We just pray for them. We pray for all other departments. We are so honored to have such wonderful city employees who work here with us to make this city a great place to live. We love you, and we praise your name tonight, in Jesus' precious name. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call our roll, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merritt.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Counselor B.
Having a quorum present, I do call our meeting to order. The character trait of this month is sincerity, eagerly doing what is right with transparent motives. At this time, we will look for an approval of the minutes for both the public hearing and the city council meeting, which were held on September the 16th, 2025. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve our minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving these minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, bow a like sign. And the minutes are approved. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda only. Please understand that we have two comment portions, and our first one will be regarding things that we will be voting on this evening, things that are on our agenda. We will also have a secondary comment time later in the meeting for other things that citizens might wish to address. So, if you wish to come forward, you will have three minutes to address
Yes, Jackie Nix, 706 Running Brook Circle. I want to address the budget. I attended the work session last week, and there were a lot of questions. There were a lot of questions posed by many counselors. I just ask that before you vote on to approve the budget, that those questions have been properly answered? If there are amendments that need to be made, that they have been made? For instance, it was brought up that education, that we're level funding education, when every single one ran their campaign on education being top priority. I think that we need to have some adjustments. We can juggle some things around. Also, as you well know, I am an advocate for the library, and I brought up some questions about the library and some issues about how the money is being spent. I asked that you had requested the financial report from the library. I know I also requested a financial report from the library, and I've not yet received it. Maybe you got yours faster, but if you haven't received the financial report and haven't made those comparisons to what they budgeted, and did they spend the money on the things that they said they're gonna spend the money on, please, if you don't have answers to these things, please hold over this vote and wait until you get the answers. We're already in a period of time that, you know, we're operating without a budget technically, and it's fine. Everything, world goes on. Regarding the reappointment of library board members, same thing. If we haven't gotten answers to these questions, please remove this from the consent agenda, hold over until we get answers, because it doesn't make sense to reappoint the same people who are possibly not using our money as they should. This is all about accountability. And going in, approving these folks, and then after the fact, trying to, you know, hold them accountable, that's crazy, okay? This is the point where you have the power to either appoint them or not appoint them. So, please, please. I hope you have the answers, and if you don't, please hold over, and let's slow this roll down and get those answers before these items are voted on. Let's not try to, you know, vote it and then try to change it after the fact. Let's go into it with eyes wide open and make sure we have all of the information. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Once again, Reverend Dr. L. White II, 621 West Fourth Street. I want to bring up about resolution number 10, the name of the property at 124th Way, Main Street, which is right across the street. Did y'all, did the mayor and his staff, and I'm quite sure after I say this, the mayor gonna come back up here and say, oh, you know, like he always does, the staff is doing an outstanding job. But did anyone think about the name? You gonna name it after, which is an insult to a particular population of people naming it after Etha Pratt, which, that's an insult, because she was a slave owner. You know, microaggression behavior refers to subtle or unintentional verbiage, non-verbal, or environmental action that communicate hostile, derogatory, or negative slice and insults toward marginalized groups, particular people of color, women, LGBTQIA, individuals, others. And this is, this is a major micro assault. You're gonna name that after that place over there that's supposed to be for the community. And then lyric, the theater that was segregated, blacks to go even to, segregated blacks to go even to the theater, but that's what we named it, and that's what y'all gotta vote on tonight. I hope y'all vote no, and change it to a name that'll be proudly used here in Prattville. We say we are a preferred community. Let's make sure we are a preferred community. But I ask you to vote no on this name. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Come forward. Give your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes
My name is Daniel Woodfin. I live on 103 Sycamore Drive. I've spoken many times up here, and I've basically spoken on the same issues over and over and over, it's finances and having to deal with the Todd County Board of Education with the one cent sales tax. I emailed every one of you, made a post on Facebook encouraging others to email you, but encouraging to vote no on the current proposal, simply because there's no increase of funding for the Todd County Board of Education. I've also sent you a 15-minute video explaining how you could possibly reallocate the one cent sales tax. I haven't made that publicly available to the citizens, but I can if need be. The thing I have is I'm not an accountant. I am a math major with Troy University. I graduated with honors. I'm also a licensed land surveyor with the state of Alabama. My credentials aren't in the background of accounting, but I do have a passion for the people, and I stand here in sincerity with transparent motives that I want you to vote no on the Todd County Board of Education proposal, or for your proposal on the funding for the Todd County Board of Education. Y'all ran on it. It's already been stated. I just find it, I don't know the word. I just wish you would do what you say you're gonna do. I wish you'd walk the walk instead of talk the talk, and I wish you would do it in a way that is honoring and glorifying to God and to the city of Prattville. You have people upset with the name of the Esters. It's because you didn't ask for input from the city, from the citizens. You're not asking for input from us for anything. Even when we email you, I get ignored. I got one reply from the email, and that was Thea Langley. None of you emailed me. A couple of you voiced your concerns with me and spoke with me personally, but my own council member, John Chambers, did not respond to me or acknowledge that I even exist anytime I've ever stood up here. I am in your district. I live on 103 Sycamore Drive. I would like for you to reach out to me more often, and allow me to voice my concerns, and at least feel heard, because at this point, for two months, I don't feel heard. I've asked for Daniel Oakley's opinion on things, and I've received nothing. My frustration is, you can hear it in my voice, I'm trying not to get upset with you, but my frustration stems from spending two months trying to get answers on the funding for the Todd County Board of Education, and the only thing I can get is the numbers I put together. Those numbers I put together is done with full transparency, with full admittance that I am human. I do make mistakes, but I've asked not only every citizen in the city of Prattville, but I've also asked your financial director and every one of you sitting up here to review my numbers, and if it's wrong, please call me out, please, because I will gladly review my numbers, just like anybody else should, especially your financial director, when their numbers don't make sense. So, please, vote no. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, sir. Come forward. Say your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Pass, pass, Lucas Senior, 1211 Calhoun Crossing. I share the same mindset as some of these citizens back here. I think, Mr. Whaley, when Mr. Woodfin came up here the last time, and you were saying, if, why can't we just show it? If there's somebody made a mistake, hey, let's just fix it. So, I appreciate you saying that. It went on deaf ears, but I appreciate you putting it on record. The second thing with this building over here, this, it's a beautiful venue, beautiful. As I said in my live feed, though, for the black community, you may as well put a rebel flag out there, and some lynching stuff, because that stuff doesn't sit well with any of us. And you've already put the name on there, and then you're gonna come tonight to vote? To me, it seemed like, hey, let's vote on these names, let's put it on there. So, tonight, it's already up there, so if you vote no, what you gonna do? Take it down? I mean, these things are, I know from you guys' perspective, how we feel doesn't matter, because you showed that. But, man, you guys are elected officials. They say you love Prattville, you love this community. You went to school up here at Prattville. You went here, you taught here, you did that, yet there's nothing in the budget to increase funding for the Todd County Board of Education, which is Prattville sits in the county. So, I mean, it's just, but I guess it's the same old same old. We do what we wanna do. We don't have to be accountable to anybody. And just because you citizens come down here and tell us how you feel, we still not gonna do anything, because nobody tells us what to do but us. When you pray to God and you ask God for deliverance, you ask God to show you, you ask God to take you out of it and put Him in it, are there just words? Because if there's no action behind it, that's all it can be, is words. Somebody told me I was supposed to be a pastor, but I know who I am.
Thank you for your comments. Please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Alyssa Brown, 2022 Summit Parkway. I guess y'all follow the, it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission, and usually, I'm a big fan of that, but not when it comes at the cost of your constituents. It shouldn't be necessary, because it's just an awful approach, and it really just shows that you truly do not care for your constituents. It doesn't matter how many times you can say it. It doesn't matter how pretty your delivery is and how much your tone is. It doesn't matter when you don't actually vote how you should vote when you speak about things. I bring up that I'm a coach. I am. I coach middle school girls, and I make it my mission and my top priority to always make sure that I set an example for them. And when I am making a mistake, I make sure that they hold me accountable, because that's what what I expect for other people to do as well. You are in an elected role. You are elected by your constituents, by people who have to live with the daily impacts of what you decide here. It doesn't matter what you want to do, it's what a group, like us as a community wants, not just the few, not just the preferred, everyone. So if people are just asking that you change the name, change the name. It's just the name, right? At the end of the day, it's just a word, right? Change the name is not that hard. They're asking for simple, small, easy things and you guys make it seem like we're asking you to drag your feet in concrete and then stand there and then the concrete hardens and now we're asking you to jump. We're not asking that. We're just asking you to do simple things that what you're here tonight is to vote on these things. They shouldn't even already be happening. If they're already happening, why even have these meetings? That doesn't, that doesn't make much sense to me. So again, I think that as a young person, I'm tired of having to parent and coach old, older adults in how to act and behave. So please just follow what you say and not just, not just say what you want to do, do what you say you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak on any item that we are voting on this evening? Yes, ma'am. Come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Tony Canning, 211, Dear Trace. I was just looking over the resolution, naming said hiring a hundred or something. And if you look at the resolution on the fourth paragraph, it says, and to hire 89 full-time. So I think either that needs to amended or whatever. And then regarding y'all's question, it says that they're gonna hire it no less than the minimum average hourly wage. So to me, that's not great. And also, you have had the video, the photos up there of the Project Magnolia and I noticed that it has a great big red line through it and it's, that's the gas line. And then when you look at the renderings, the gas line is going to be, looks like it's gonna be built over. And I don't know if that's the resolution you approved on February 4th for Kinder Morgan for 250,000 where you said for the gas line, pipeline relocation. So I don't know if that's the same thing, but I was really wondering about that when I saw that. Plus it has some extra land in there that is not in the piece of property that they're buying. So also going back to the budget as they were talking, I have to say, I think these amount of raises that department heads are getting are too great. Some of them, yes, maybe they deserve, but a lot of them, I think this automatic jump is just too high. It, it needs to be taken back and we have a lot of low income or low money workers, excuse me. And, you know, shift it down to them. They're the worker bees. They're the ones, they're the ones that are out there toiling in the heat or the cold or the rain or whatever. I really think, and as these other people said, I think you need to hold this and have more discussion than accepting it. Going back to the Esther Building, it is exactly what they said. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to have it on here when they've already announced the name and everything like that. And as you're all aware, I said it was very dumb, dumb, dumb. And the mayor wrote back and said, I'm blinded by hatred and jealousy because I said that. Well, no, I think something of that magnitude needs to be discussed and I think input from the citizens. That's a big building and that's a, of a venue. We won't even talk about that. But it just, why are you doing this? Why are you putting it on the agenda when it's already a done deal? And supposedly you're the ones that are supposed to do the name. I'm out.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak on anything on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, ma'am. I might add a point.
Yes, sir. Granted.
Andrew Odom, he has an additional report to give.
Good evening, council. So I wanted to provide a update on dilapidated structures in the city to kind of work off my prior update that I, that I provided in July. So as you know, on July 3rd, 2025, the Robinsons executed an agreement which was mutually agreed upon and prepared by myself and their attorney. Paragraph one of that agreement required that within 45 days of the agreement being signed, and it was signed on July 3rd, that the Robinsons would submit a detailed plan to the city which outlines how they intend to bring the structure in compliance. That 45 days expired on August 18th. On September 2nd, I emailed the Robinsons attorney and asked about not yet having that plan as agreed to and I referenced the agreement. That same day, the Robinsons attorney did respond to me, but stated it was his understanding that the previously submitted contractor's quote was sufficient as to a detailed plan. I then replied to their attorney and referenced an email that I sent to him on May 1st, which specifically stated the detailed plan must not just be the prior quote. He acknowledged that and said he would work on this and get back to me. Two weeks later, on September 16th, I emailed the Robinsons attorney again, asking for some sort of update or action on the matter. And then that same day, he emailed me back and said that he was working on a draft and hoped to have it to me by the end of the week. Neither I, the planning department, or code enforcement received any plan that week or the next week. And then on Friday, September 19th, 2025, it was discovered that work was being performed on the Robinson House, which included a fully framed, what appeared to be an addition to the home. Upon discovering this work, again without no plan, as agreed to, a stop work order was issued and once that stop work order was issued, the Robinsons did comply and promptly stopped working on the addition. On September 22nd, City Planning Director Jonathan Smith clarified to the council in an email that the homeowner needed to submit the appropriate plans and an application for a building permit. The pre-existing demolition permit that the Robinsons had did not cover the scope of work that was being done on the structure at that time. The next day, September 23rd, I spoke with the Robinsons attorney about the building permit versus demolition permit and whether the construction was required to be permitted. And I discussed with the planning director that day and then called the Robinsons attorney and reiterated that it had been done without any plans submitted as the Robinsons had agreed to. On September 24th, the Robinsons attorney emailed me regarding our prior day conversation and the work was done, replacing rotten wood and not a new addition, but he wanted to know what needed to be done in order to get back to work. On September 30th, after I met with the planning department, I replied to the Robinsons attorney that the next steps would clearly be as follows, that they would submit the detailed plan in accordance with the agreement. Once the plan is received, the structure would be inspected in coordination with a plan to ascertain what all type of permits would need to be acquired. And then once the Robinsons obtained the permits, the work would resume. On October 6th, a week later yesterday, the Robinsons attorney emailed me the plan and I immediately forwarded that plan to the planning department. It is anticipated that based on the plan, the work done thus far and the intended work that is included in that plan, the following permits will be required. A building permit with a site plan showing the new part of the house, an electrical permit, a plumbing permit, a mechanical HVAC permit, and a gas permit if applicable. So shifting gears a little bit, as to the process for dilapidated structures, upon much discussion with code enforcement and the planning department, we have made the decision to institute a dilapidated structure permit form that will be handled by the planning department. And it, it just makes sense. If they're the department that's issuing the permits, they're the department that needs to be keeping track of these dilapidated structures. Once a structure is reported as dilapidated, it will get an inspection by our building official in accordance with state code to determine if it is in fact dilapidated and unsafe, not just the outward appearance of it, but the structural integrity is in question. And once that's done, the owner would have the option to acquire a dilapidated permit, which would enable them to demolish the structure themselves or institute repairs after submitting a plan. So one structure that's currently going through this refined process is 113 Isom Street. So that's the update that I have regarding dilapidated structures. If you have any questions about that or the permitting process, I'll do my best. And also Jonathan Smith is available here to assist with those questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. Do any councillors have any questions at this time? Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, councillors. We have made a few changes in the code enforcement division for dilapidated structures as mentioned. When it comes to the enforcement of dilapidated structure, it's being moved from the police department to our planning department where the building inspectors are now housed. So I feel like that's worth repeating. Also, I'd like to update everyone that the Dorsey Property Agreement for 520 East Main Street has expired without any progress at this time. Councilor Merrick, thank you for inviting me to your district meeting. We discussed traffic calming, we're looking at test areas for trial traffic calming in the near future. Depending on the passing of the budget, we'll determine when the 14-speed radar devices, two for each district, will be purchased and utilized. One of the meetings I actually had today, I talked with a citizen that lives here in Prattville. He works for a group called Alucensus, is an AI product that specializes in traffic calming. I would like for everyone here to look it up and be a little bit familiar with it because as we move forward, I know there's been several complaints about speeding in various neighborhoods and pick a district, it's there. I personally was coming down Upper Kingston just the other day and as I was somewhere around the Wilderness Park, it's double yellow line, 35 miles an hour. Someone decided to pass me and they were having to go at least 50. And I've been in other situations in a city vehicle, coming down a double, double yellow line in a city vehicle marked with a blue tag and someone decided to pass in that area. So there's, like I say, pick a district, it's there. I think the only way that we're really gonna be able to combat a lot of this driving habits is to get very serious about it. And I don't know if this AI system is what's best for us, but I think everything needs to be on the table, something that we need to research on and be prepared to protect our neighborhoods to its fullest. But as well, Monday, the Prattville Fire Department began hosting approximately 150 AMAS team members at Cooters Pond Park. I spoke about this coming at a couple of meetings ago. This will run through Wednesday. This exercise is a simulation of a statewide AMAS deployment to our area in the aftermath of a historical flooding. Fortunately, mock drill, mock drill. Well, happy to report that the five new daytime tennis courts are now open at Newton Park. I also like to bring Prattville up to date. According to SDAC, the contractor on our Fairview Avenue project, paving of the disturbed area beside the new curb and gutter, which is basically the old asphalt to the new curb and gutter, that area that was dug up and, and it is now ready to be paved for its first layer. After they do that, they will be milling the whole area of that project. I wish I could give us a timeline on how long this will take, but it will take time, it will take, it will be noisy and it will be dusty. So if you do have an alternate route during this timeline, please, please use it. Councillors, with your support of Resolution Number Two, we'll be moving forward with the partnership with Owens Corning as they will be building their state-of-the-art manufacturing facility in our South Industrial Park and I encourage you to support that. Council President, I just want to briefly address a matter from our last meeting. There was a comment made suggesting that an employee from the executive branch received a 60% raise. That statement was misleading and false. I've written a, written a request to Council-elect Langley asking for clarification so we can ensure the information being shared is accurate. I believe it's important that we show professional courtesy to one another and to our staff when discussing any matters. Councillors, there was some discussion about the Todd County Rescue Squad and a skid steer during the budget work session. A skid steer from Public Works has been surplus to the Fire Department Training Center and it is possible to allow the Rescue Squad to utilize this equipment in lieu of additional financial support. That can be utilized, we've worked with our city clerk, our city attorney, and that is one option if council is interested in that. Councillors, on the proposed 2025-26 City of Prattville Budget, y'all have heard me say it before, but this is more than a ledger of expenses, is a living document and a roadmap for our future. It reflects the real need of our departments, ensures that essential services continue at the high level our citizens deserve. It supports the very people who keep our city moving forward by providing both merit and cost of living raises. This budget acknowledges, acknowledges our responsibilities, not just to our employees, but to the entire community. As leaders, we are entrusted to provide safe streets, quality parks, reliable infrastructure, and strong public services. At the same time, we must have honest conversations about areas of growth and need. For example, our library and our public swimming pool are two facilities that deserve thoughtful discussion because I think we all know exactly what condition they are in. These are not just buildings, they are vital community spaces where families, children, and neighbors come together. Planning for their sustainability and improvement is part of our shared responsibility. It is also time for the structural engineer and architect to reassess the library building. Remember, he pretty much gave us an okay to do certain work to it, allow occupancy, and so it's now for us to have them come back in again. And I'll be bringing additional reports during future council meetings on that. But one of the things that I will be asking council and the engineer and architect as well, what can we do if need be? Because I'd rather have a new library somewhere else. But I really don't see that in the cards for the city of Prattville with a lot of other projects that we have going on. But I feel like a damaged area can be broadened and supported through a bigger project on that one, but that would be for future discussions. But councillors, budgets are about priorities and values. You know, this one demonstrates a commitment to people, our employees, our citizens, and future generations. By supporting this budget, we're not only meeting the present needs of our department, departments, but also laying the groundwork for long-term progress. I respectfully, respectfully ask the city council to approve this living document so we can continue to meet our obligations, invest in our people, and move Prattville forward together. Also councillors, I'd like to acknowledge that here in this country, in the state of Alabama, and City of Prattville, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Past Appreciation Month, this week is Fire Prevention Week, and on the 15th is Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day, and on the 12th through the 18th is Chamber of Commerce Week. The City of Prattville will host the Seventh Annual Parade of Pumpkins, October the 17th through the October the 31st. And I'd like to thank the Parade of Pumpkins sponsors, James Hardy, Civil Southeast, Latham &amp; McKee Architects, BWS Technologies, and Randy Jones &amp; Associates for sponsoring and helping make this event a success. I hope everyone will come out and enjoy this event. Also, in conjunction with the kickoff of Parade of Pumpkins, I'd like to invite everyone out to our area that has been in question. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment to address the council and our citizens for my possible oversight regarding the name of the building, Esther, and the lyric at Esters. I believe council approval for naming a city facility is more of a traditional formality and not a legal requirement. I've since learned that it is in fact broadly determined by state statute. This building has been referred to as the Old Bank Building for quite some time. This building has been referred to as the Old Bank Building for quite some time, and I had mentioned several times about this would not be its permanent name. And when the name Esther was chosen, it was intended to honor Daniel Pratt's wife, Esther Tickner Pratt, as part of preserving and recognizing our city's history. Just one street over from here is Tickner Avenue, which was put in place in her honor by Daniel Pratt, which uses an H instead of a K when spelling her maiden name. I never had any ill intent to bypass any proper processes or the council's authority. Just a simple, this was simply an honest difference of opinion on my part. I want to ensure you that my intentions are honorable and respectful to this community, but consistent process is needed, and we have not really had one. The Grove over here, and I think the Grove that we have our farmer's market and so many other things, we've been calling it the Grove. We have a sign up called Grove, and it's not had council action on it. I'm willing to help in any way to help us get through all of this, but you know, there's been several challenges for this that I understand both sides of opinions. But again, the intent of this was very honest, very open. We want it to be very exciting for this community, because again, I've had a lot of positive response on this. And again, this is about the naming of a building and a common area for all of us to utilize. And while we cannot change the past, and while we should not forget the past, we just need to remember that we cannot use today's values to judge someone else. And there's been a lot of good things that Esther Tickner Pratt has done for this community as well as Daniel Pratt, and I hope that we can all understand and realize that and be able to enjoy this area. But again, I hope the naming will happen this evening, the grand opening of this area, the lyric at Esther's on October the 17th at 5:30. I hope anyone will be there. We look forward to this family-friendly common space for all to enjoy. Madam President, end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any councilors have any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? Yes, sir. Mr. Whaley?
Hey, just a couple clarification things real quick, Mayor. So if I understood right, you said dilapidated structure process is moving to the planning department?
The process, yes. Personnel are saying the same.
Right. So when there's a report of a dilapidated structure, it will go to the planning department instead of code enforcement?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make-
Now, we're still a little bit of change of that. Some of that will also be with our new, not our new, but with our changing over our work order system. And I encourage everyone to get acquainted with our work order system, whether it's streetlights, potholes, or whatever it might happen to be. But they will be working in conjunction, but as far as the personnel going out to inspect these dilapidated structures, it will be from the planning, which is our building inspectors.
Okay. So, and I know that'll be all worked out, so no more questions about that. Just wanted to know if I see, if I have a dilapidated structure sent to me by one of my constituents, then in the future we'll know what department to contact to let them know about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second thing, you said equipment use, I guess that's going to be as far as the rescue squad utilizing a piece of equipment that the fire department has or will have. You said if we approved that, is that going to be a city policy that allows them? Because I think the city insurance would have to be involved in that, there would have to be. So I mean, is it required council action for them, for us to say, yes, they can use it? Or is that more along a policy that's done under admin with authorization from our insurance from an outside person to be able to utilize that equipment?
Passing of the budget, but then as far as when it comes to liability, you might need to help me out on this one, but they would be basically with the contract that we would have with them is they would pretty much hold us harmless, and it would be made available to them, working through our fire department.
Okay. Nothing else that we would have to pass as far as a policy?
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. And then the only other thing, we talked about some architectural and engineering items for the library. Are those, I mean, are those in this proposed budget? Where those funds will come from?
Not as far as the actual work of construction of the building, but as far as hiring someone to our engineer, hired engineer, day construction, day-
Structure.
Structural engineer, thank you. They will be going back out. Now, the architect is going to be working through the library.
Okay, okay. All right. And then the last thing was, were there any additional changes made to the budget as far as any line items for community initiatives or anything else? I don't remember seeing them, or if there was, I don't think I saw anything.
Not on the community initiatives, no, sir. But I believe two areas of pay increase that the council discussed about have been met.
Okay. So then our contribution to our ACBOE is the same as it was in the proposed budget?
Yes, sir, because that is basically under a contract. And then y'all will be able to amend that, because I think CAC and also ACBOE will be coming up due basically about the same.
Do any other councilors have any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir. Will you all be extending more permits to the Robinsons?
They will, if they come back forth, they will be purchasing those permits.
Through the planning?
Through planning, yes, sir.
Now, changing from code enforcement to planning that doesn't require any council action or moving forward?
None that I'm aware of. That's basically just internal policy, which I think is streamlined. Some of the other internal policies, I guess we've been working on was that secondary permitting. So if a structure does get on the radar of codes, and then especially by the time it gets to this council, if those persons in question there have not done what they're supposed to, they can't just come up and get a permit. They'll have to fill out a, basically a set plan. We're going to do this on this date, this is who I got, construction person is going to be, so that way it's pretty much documented. So if it does come back up to this council body for further action, you actually have seen all the homework that has gone into it.
The library, were you still not able to get a report from them, a financial report?
I have not requested one.
Okay, all right. And I know too, you saying that it just may have been a slight oversight with the naming of this property and how in the past with the Grove, it didn't require council action. And I think probably now, especially with the amount of money that was spent over here, I think that's probably why, part of the reason why, you know, there's some public pushback on the naming because of the amount of money that we spent, you know, as opposed to like the Grove or whatever. Do you foresee us trying to do something soon to correct some of these procedural processes?
As far as naming?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you're asking for a suggestion-
No, 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 not this. No, no, not this, but I'm just saying any other-
For the procedures?
Yeah.
I mean, one suggestion I might have is council passing ordinance. Again, difference of opinion, because saying it very delicately here is that when I said broadly, broadly determined is not specified in state statute that it's A, B, and C. So if you're looking to answer your question, then a city ordinance, not a council resolution.
In which state ordinance? Do you have any idea, Andrew, that addresses this? I didn't want to put you on the spot.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Yes, it's Code of Alabama Section 114356. And by broadly, that section, just to summarize, and it's just a couple of sentences, but it says that power, control, and management of the city's finances, real and personal property resides with the council. So there's no specific statement as far as naming of properties, naming of streets, naming of facilities. But digging into this, there are several cities that pass ordinances that do give that authority to the council or various departments on how different facilities, streets, parks are named. So that would be what that process would entail if an ordinance is passed to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other councilors have any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? You got one more? Mr. Jackson, you may floor again.
Ema, did we find any additional funding potentially for them?
Potentially, we can find some. Okay, that's fine. I mean, it has not been changed in the budget. Okay. I do foresee, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do foresee that there will probably be some budget amendments over the next 12 months or so. Okay, because again, I did mention this during the budget hearing over here. It was oversight on my part, is that our Heritage Association over here, I believe, asked for another $10,000, and I thought that they were including some others on the email thread, and so I own that. But in time, I'd like to see that amended as well. And again, too, I don't know if the council has had time to think about any moving forward with some of the community initiatives, but my thought process on that is to have a different type of process. And it'd be great to have a dedicated funding source, but somewhere or another, I think it'd be best to find a dollar amount. If you had a dedicated funding source, that'd be super great, especially like so many of other departments, their budget is a lot of times based off of sales tax revenues, which can go up and down. If you had that same way of community initiatives, then if you had tied into that, whatever that revenue source was, if it goes up, then everybody gets a bump. If everybody comes down, everybody comes down, if the funding comes down. And then you could figure out what that dollar amount is and back into all these community initiatives. So just my thought, and something I'll be glad to work with anybody, any committees on this.
Mr. Jackson?
And you jumped ahead to the community initiatives on the agenda. That was one that I was going to bring up. I was going to ask possibly tonight if we needed to hold this until a later date, until we potentially look at a funding source for the community initiatives, so that we can go ahead and streamline, like you said, moving forward. So if we could potentially hold it and also request some financial reports, hopefully from the library at that time as well. During this process, while we streamline, then maybe we can get some more information from the library as to how they've been spending their money moving forward, or how they've spent their money previously and what we need to budget for them moving forward.
Well, I take that a little bit of a question and a comment. My thoughts are, please pass the budget tonight. What I have seen in the past, and I can name several different areas, short-term rentals or Airbnbs, some other areas of conversation that we've tried to send out to committee have had staff to work very long and hard on, and it takes months and months and months, and then it still gets nowhere. I think we owe it to this community, to our employees, and everybody. Because one thing as well, too, there are some of these community initiatives that rely on these fundings very heavily. So until the budget is passed, they don't get a check, whether sometimes it's monthly, sometimes it's quarterly, I'm not aware of any annually. But I would highly recommend to go ahead and I highly request that you go ahead and pass the budget. Because one of the items too, not items, but one of the challenges, if you continue to hold this budget and these pay raises are not enacted, that means HR has to go back for about 500 employees to go back in there from day one to put in the cola. And maybe some of them will have to come back in at day one or day 10 or day whatever with their merits. I'm sorry, yeah, for their merits, for their merits. So it's a lot of time and work and effort by our HR. And again, any raise is much appreciated by these employees, and I think it'd go a long ways for their families. And one item as well, I've always said so many times, that the unique thing about Prattville, the municipality of Prattville and the community of Prattville, is that we have, we can impact our economics here in Prattville, because our employees eat, work, and shop here. So it's, we have a lot of small-town vendors who are looking forward to our employees coming in.
And I truly understand that. And I guess in the nine years that I've been here, I don't recall too many times where we've actually gone back in the, I don't know. But I hope that we'll, moving forward, that we will come back and amend the budget and take a look at some of these community initiatives.
We've amended the budget multiple times a year.
Yeah, what I'm saying as far as these community initiatives, that's all. And speaking of, you've mentioned HR, will they be giving us that pay study anytime soon? I know Councilor Langley requested the pay study, so is there, should we be looking for that anytime soon that you think of?
To my understanding, I think she'd already shown you the pay plan, and I think there's been multiple attempts to meet with Councilor Langley.
Well, I remember, well, we talked about that before, but I know that I, maybe last year, I know I asked if I could have the email from the Chandre &amp; Associates forwarded to me, because I wanted to see what they actually sent, not what we actually printed. But that's what I requested, I want to say the last time, maybe a year and a half ago. It was just that they forwarded us the actual email that Chandre &amp; Associates forwarded to them, to us, HR.
What specific are you looking for? Maybe I can help you out.
I just wanted to look at the document, that's all.
If nothing else, I'll sit down.
Any other councillor have any comments or questions for the mayor this evening? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move into the reports from the council on special committees. Councilor Sanders, do you have a report tonight? Councilor Jackson, do you have a report?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Chambers, do you have a report?
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to notate, September 22nd, there was a sanitation meeting with sanitation group, Councilor Jackson and Sanders and I. We discussed the financial state of the sanitation department, the possibility of the purchasing of new trucks and a new sanitation building, and discussed potential changes to the code of ordinances.
Thank you, Councilor Chambers. Councilor Merrick, do you have a special report?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Whaley?
I have one. The finance committee met on Thursday, October the 2nd, and we discussed business matters with the city attorney. At this time, we have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that could possibly fall on tonight's consent agenda include resolution number one, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of garbage and rubbish at 428 Upper Kingston Road. Resolution number two, to authorize the city attorney to affix the cost for the removal of stagnant water at 709 Summer Lane. Resolution number three is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 845 Newton Street a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code. pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Four is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1957 Cobb's Ford Road a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Five is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 884 Johnson Street a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Six is to declare the garbage and rubbish at 890 Wilberforce Avenue a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Seven is to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 205 Summer Court and 849 Loader Street to be unsafe and a public nuisance and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Eight is to declare the dilapidated structure at 890 Johnson Street to be unsafe and a public nuisance. Resolution Number Ten is to reappoint William E. Barrett, Jr. to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Resolution Number Ten is to reappoint Donnie Bethel to the Ataga Prattville Public Library Board of Trustees. Resolution Number Eleven is to reappoint Gloria Kikeandall to the Ataga Prattville Library Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
Some move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is now properly before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda? We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to ask that we remove Items 10 and 11 from the consent agenda. Before reappointing members to the library board, I'd like to have clarification on whether the application process for new citizens was opened up publicly. Of course, the library is funded by the city, so I think it's important that we allow all interested residents the opportunity to apply before confirming reappointments.
Counselor Jackson, as I understand it, our actual procedure would be to remove Items Number 10 and 11 would be to bump them down onto our regular agenda for this evening, and then they would come up for an individual vote as opposed to being lumped in as a consent. Are you comfortable with that procedure?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Odom, as we do that, do we need to vote to take them off, or do we simply, we just simply bump them? And should they become Items Number One and Two above our resolution, which is left over, or should we bump them all the way down to becoming last? How does that work?
They need to be addressed as Item One and Two, but of course, read those in as former consent 10, former consent 11, but there does not need to be a vote on what Mr. Jackson has brought forward. It just takes one member to, one of those to be off, and they automatically come off.
Yes, sir. I remember the procedure. I just want to clarify and make sure that we are following it exactly. Yes, sir. So we will, counsel, now we will be voting on the consent agenda regarding Items Number One through Nine, with 10 and 11 to be voted on separately in just a few moments. Is there further discussion regarding Items One through Nine being the consent agenda for this evening? Hearing none. All in favor of the new consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted. So at this time, we will now consider former consent agenda item Number 10, which is to reappoint Donnie Bethel to the Ataga Prattville Library Board of Trustees. Do we need to read that one in specifically, or do we just need to introduce it by title?
You can introduce it by title.
So, Item Number, Number 10 is now before us. Is there discussion regarding Item Number 10?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson.
I would just like to verify with the library board that they open this process up to other applicants before reappointing Mr. Bethel.
So are you proposing a no vote, or are you proposing a hold?
I'll propose that we hold until the next meeting. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Whaley.
So we're discussing what is now former Resolution Number 10, so it's on our current agenda, so that would require a motion and a second to discuss?
No, it would not. So there needs to be a motion, and then a second, and then discussion, and if there's a motion to postpone to the next meeting, that would then need to be made and addressed.
Right, but, but we started discussion without a motion and a second, didn't?
There needs to be a motion first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley. So, do we have a motion regarding Resolution, former Resolution Number 10, currently the beginning of our normal agenda? Is there a motion? All right, so Item Number 10 fails due to lack of motion. Item Number 11 is a resolution to appoint Gloria Kikeandall to the Ataga Prattville Library Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion on Resolution Number 11? All right, Item Number 11 also fails due to a lack of motion. So we are now to our current, our current regular agenda, Item Number One on the original regular agenda. Item Number One is a resolution to grant a lounge retail liquor Class II package license for Alabama Enterprises One LLC doing business as Z Spirits. Item Number One was held from the June 17th meeting. We have already read this one in properly. It is now properly before us. Is there discussion regarding Resolution Number One? Mr. Whaley.
Yes, this resolution was held from the June meeting. That was held by request of the petitioner to be held until the first meeting in October, which is where we are now. I stated in the past that with the recommendation of the police department not to approve this, as well as the number of calls that I've received from constituents in District Five, where this is located, that were also in opposition to, to another potential Class II package store license that was on McQueen Smith Road. Those people who were on, several of those people who were on that 200 signature petition have called me again and stated that they are not in favor of this granting of this license either. So I'm just putting that out there on the record. That is the, the feedback that I have heard from the people in District Five concerning the resolution to grant the Class II package license for this, this business.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley. Is there further discussion regarding Resolution Number One? Mr. Chambers.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to piggyback off of Counselor Whaley. I understand there are a lot of District Five constituents that made it clear to you, and I think that that's something you have to take in consideration, no matter if it's your district or not, you have to see the, see the city as a whole. I also would say the police department has not recommended this. Just a few bullet points, they mentioned they already have three package stores within three miles of each other in the same area. There's also concerns of increased criminal activity with three churches, two schools, one city park in the wild, say, within about a mile and a half. So I also just wanted to hit those points. Thank you.
Is there further discussion regarding Resolution Number One? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number One, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed to Resolution Number One, please signify by raising your right hand. And Resolution Number One fails. Resolution Number Two is to authorize the mayor to enter into an economic development agreement between the City of Prattville, Ataga County, the Waterworks Board, and the City of Prattville, and Owens Corning in support of Project Magnolia. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas in Resolution Book 2025-A, page 214, on July 15, 2025, the City Council of the City of Prattville gave support for an incentive package to be offered to Project Magnolia. And whereas the State of Alabama, Ataga County, and the City of Prattville enthusiastically support and encourage industry, including industry engaged in the development of asphalt and roofing. And whereas Owens Corning is an international leader in developing, manufacturing, and marketing insulation, roofing, and fiberglass composites with the goal of expanding its production in the southeastern United States. And whereas Owens Corning has decided to establish within the city and county a manufacturing facility to be located at the South Industrial Park, the Park, with an initial capital investment of up to $325 million, to be owned and operated by Owens Corning, the facility or project, and to hire 89 full-time employees, the jobs commitment, at no less than a minimum average hourly wage, the wage commitment. And whereas Owens Corning has decided to locate the facility at a site on a certain tract of land located at the park, the approximate location of which is depicted on Exhibit A attached here to the project site, and which project site is composed in approximately 190 acres of vacant land in the park owned by the city. And whereas the city and county desire to have Owens Corning locate the facility on the project site. And whereas in order to induce Owens Corning to locate in the city, county, and state, the city, county, and state have offered certain incentives and made specific commitments to Owens Corning, both financial and non-financial, for the purpose of inducing Owens Corning to locate the facility on the project site. And whereas the city and county endorse and believe that it is the best public interest to enter into this agreement with Owens Corning pursuant to which Owens Corning is induced to locate the facility on the project site. Okay. Whereas the parties heretofore desire to have such proposals set forth in a written agreement by and between the city, county, and Owens Corning. And whereas Amendment Number 772 to the Constitution of Alabama, 1901, Section 94.01(c)(2) of the recompiled Constitution of Alabama authorizes the city to lend its credit to or grant public funds and things of value to aid any corporation or other business entity for the purpose of promoting the economic development within its jurisdiction. And whereas the City of Prattville, the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, the City Council has been asked to approve an agreement for use and grant of public funds and things of value. The agreement to Owens Corning, the corporation, and whereas pursuant to and in conformity with Amendment 772 to the Constitution of Alabama, 1901, as amended on September 30, 2025, the city clerk published that certain notice of action proposed to be taken by the City of Prattville, Alabama, at a public hearing, the notice, and the Montgomery Advertiser, the newspaper having the largest circulation in the City of Prattville, the city, which publication was at least seven days prior to the date of the meeting at which the resolution is being considered. And whereas the City Council, at its public hearing on October 7, 2025, offered members of the public the opportunity to comment on the matters set forth in the notice, and those comments have been considered by the City Council. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville follows: One, the City Council finds and determines that the notice published in Montgomery Advertiser satisfies the requirements of Amendment 772. Two, that the agreement between the city, the corporation, Ataga County, Alabama, and the Waterworks Board of the City of Prattville, Alabama, is hereby approved. Three, that the mayor of the city shall be and hereby is authorized to execute and enter into the agreement and deliver the agreement set forth in this resolution to the other parties, to the agreement, or to their representatives. Four, that after due consideration, the City Council finds and determines that the expenditure of public funds in granting of things of value for the purposes in the matter specified in the agreement and the execution of the agreement approved in this resolution serve valid and sufficient public purposes, notwithstanding any individual benefit accruing to the corporation or any other private entity or entities. Five, that the public benefits to the city resulting from the agreement transactions hereby approved include the promotion and advancement of local economic and commercial development, and the stimulation of the local economy, and increase in employment opportunities within the city, and expansion of the city's tax base, which will result in significant additional tax revenues for the city, and increase in tax revenues for the school operating, schools operating in the city, and the expansion and retention of industrial and commercial enterprises in the city, all of which inure directly to the economic health and public welfare of the city and its residents. So moved, Madam President.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Two? Yes, sir, Mr. Whaley.
Yes, again, and I made a couple of comments before the meeting, but I, I did want to point out, so I, to address some of the things that the public had concerns over, I had several questions that I asked myself. So yes, we did approve a few months back the movement of the, the pipeline, and we did receive $1.5 million from the state in, in use to move the pipeline. So it will be being moved in that money, the majority of that money is coming from the, the state to help with that. Also, where it talks about commitment, jobs commitment at no less than minimum hour, average hourly wage. The information that I received on that was the average wage for positions at this facility start around $38.10. The average wage is $38.10, which is well above minimum wage, and I think is, is a very good opportunity for some of our younger people to, to get a job somewhere where they can build a career, and it is what I would consider a livable wage. At 20, 21 years old, I don't know what I would have done with $38.10 an hour, but... So having looked at all of that, I'm, some of the things that were in the public notice, like water tap fees, that is going to be the Waterworks Board. Some of the, the things that were in there for the county, we're not going to have figures on that. So I don't have total dollar amounts of what it is costing us as far as this, but I do see that the investment that we make in this because, because of Amendment 772, I believe is warranted because it's going to dramatically increase the amount of property tax that's paid for the school system. It's going to drastically increase the amount of funding that is going to the school system through that property tax, and then it's going to increase the city's revenue as far as business licenses and things like that. So I know there's a lot of concern about the amount, what the total amount is, but I think within a few years, even, even with the abatement of the property tax that we won't have, the increase in the business license, as well as whether it's 89 or 100 jobs that's, that's paying an average wage of $38.10, I think that is a, it's a very good benefit for us. So that was just to address some of the, the concerns that, that people have had with it.
Is there further discussion regarding Resolution Number Two? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution Number Two is adopted. Resolution Number Three is to adopt the City of Prattville Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 General Operating Fund, Gas Tax Special Revenue Fund, Debt Service Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Sanitation Enterprise Fund, Wastewater Enterprise Fund, and Judicial Special Revenue Fund budgets. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that for the purposes of financing and conduct of, financing and the conduct of affairs of the city during the period beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, inclusive the General Operating Fund, Gas Tax Special Reserve Fund, Debt Services Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Sanitation Enterprise Fund, Wastewater Enterprise Fund, and Judicial Special Revenue Fund budgets for the city's revenues and expenditures for such period as prepared and submitted to the City Council by the mayor are hereby approved and adopted as the official FY25-26, 2026 budgets for the city with a combined total of $117,267,284. I'm so moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there discussion regarding Resolution Number Three? Yes, sir, Mr. Whaley.
I would just like to make the, the statement here that I, I totally understand how important this budget process is for our employees. Having spent several years in a position where I was heavily involved in creating a departmental, departmental budget, and then several, couple of budget cycles on a special assignment where, where I had to have some input in creating departmental budgets, I will say that it is, it, it hamstrings our employees when we don't have a budget for them to operate on, and I understand the importance of the budget. I would like to point out that I asked several weeks, maybe a month, before we received the proposed budget, when we were going to see the budget normally. I know that this is a multi-month process. It takes five, four, five, sometimes six months to put these departmental budgets together and then include all of those into an overall city budget, and then we have other things like community initiatives and things that have to go into the process. I know that the Finance Department works very hard in putting all of this information together. I asked Mr. Oakley several times before the budget was ready, when are we going to see the budget? And they were still working on it. I understand that. I just want to point out that it, it is vital to our departments and our employees to have a budget to operate from, but I think it is equally as vital to this council to have that budget well in advance enough so that when we receive it, we don't have, right at two weeks before we have a budget work session and then one week before we're asked to vote on it. There were a number of items or of, of concern that were mentioned during the public hearing portion, not public hearing, but the public work session portion. And so, you know, in the future, I would like for us definitely to have, and I understand it was an election year, but, you know, the city still has to operate, we still have things that have to be done. And in my personal opinion, three weeks is not quite enough time to go through the process, to ask the questions, to ask the questions that our constituents are asking us, and, and then require our department directors and employees to try to get those, that information back to finance and back to the mayor's office. So in the future, I, I really wish that there was a way, even in election year, to have a budget prepared a little sooner so that we have more time to be able to go through that and to find it, and, and answer the questions that are there. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Is there further discussion regarding Resolution Number Three? Mr. Jackson.
Well, I just want to go ahead and just preface my remarks by saying that I appreciate our department heads and everyone that's put the work into this process. Definitely support our first responders, Chief Bingham, Chief, Chief Thompson, every department head, please know that I have deep respect for you and your teams and the vital work you do for this community every day. My comments this evening are not in opposition to you or your departments, but rather in support of ensuring that the resources and policies we approve are transparent, equitable, and in the best interest of all Prattville citizens, including the men and women who serve the city. With that said, I must respectfully express my opposition to adopting the proposed city budget in its current form. As I've stated in the previous meetings, there are still too many unanswered questions and too little transparency surrounding this budget. Over the past several weeks, I've received numerous letters, calls, and emails from residents who are deeply concerned that this budget is overinflated and lacks sufficient clarity regarding how taxpayer dollars are being spent. Additionally, the amount of money already spent remains unclear, and this council has not received the full documentation needed to verify key expenditures. The pay study, which was requested by myself, other elected officials and citizens from the HR department, still has not been properly forwarded, leaving many of our hard-working employees, especially those outside of leadership positions, without meaningful raises or recognition that they truly deserve. Equally concerning is the lack of council oversight into how community award, community initiatives are awarded and distributed to various initiatives proposed in this budget. Far too many questions from most citizens and council members remain unanswered. Even more troublesome, with a budget of this size, there are not enough work sessions for the elected counselors who are the controllers of the municipal funds and public hearings for our citizens to have input. Also, I would like to see how funds were spent by a few entities funded by the city due to their alleged involvement in the twenty-twenty-five municipal election. I would like to make sure that they didn't use funds to affect the outcome of the election.
Is there further discussion regarding Resolution Number Three? Hearing none. We will bring it to a vote. All in favor of Resolution Number Three, please signify by your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and Resolution Number Three is adopted. Resolution Number Four is to authorize the mayor to sign contracts for the services for community initiatives, city-county services, and the Atauga County Emergency Communication District E nine-one-one as allocated in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce the Resolution Number Four for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas funding for community initiatives, city-county services, and the Atauga County Emergency Communication District E nine-one-one are budgeted annually by the City of Prattville, and whereas said entities serve the public good and are necessary for health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Prattville. And whereas said entities provide services that the city could not otherwise, otherwise perform, and whereas contracts for services are needed to support the allocation of funds. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign contracts and services for community initiatives, city-county services, and the Atauga County Emergency Communication District as allocated in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. So move, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Four? Counselor Jackson.
Yeah, like I said in the work session, and I think even tonight, that moving forward with these community initiatives, I would love to see their proposals. I think the council should see what they're requesting ahead of time, and that we have some input on how much, or if we should even fund some of these initiatives moving forward.
Is there further discussion regarding Resolution Number Four? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and Resolution Number Four is adopted. Resolution Number Five is to designate legal holidays for the City of Prattville for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Counselor Whaley, would you please introduce this in lieu of Counselor Stritchak not being here this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas section ten dot two of the Human Resources Policies and Procedures Manual states that the mayor and the city council will approve a schedule of holidays for each fiscal year, and the Human Resources Department will publish the list. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the following holidays shall be designated for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-six. Veterans Day, November the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. Thanksgiving Day, November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. The Friday following Thanksgiving Day, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Christmas Day, December twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. New Year's Day, January first, twenty-twenty-six. Martin Luther King Junior Day slash Robert E. Lee's Birthday, January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-six. Memorial Day, May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-six. Juneteenth Day, June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-six. Independence Day, July third, twenty-twenty-six. Labor Day, September seventh, twenty-twenty-six. One personal holiday at the employee supervisor's discretion with prior approval. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Five? I would like to just thank counselors for jumping in, as Mr. Stritchak is not here tonight. I've called on several counselors kind of cold tonight. They have not had a chance to practice reading any of this aloud, so they are, are going through some rather long and tedious wording tonight, just on the spot, so thank y'all so much for doing that for us this evening. Is there further discussion on Resolution Number Five? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and Resolution Number Five is adopted. Resolution Number Six is to appoint department heads. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce Resolution Number Six for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas department heads of the City of Prattville were appointed through the period of September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five or until their successors are duly qualified and appointed. And whereas it is the time for the City Council to reconsider these appointments. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, the following individuals are hereby appointed as head of the department appearing opposite their name for the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-nine quadrinium or until their successors are duly qualified and appointed. Economic Development, Amy Hilliard, pay grade twenty-six sixteen. Fire Department, Joshua Bingham, pay grade twenty-six six, and Police Department, Mark Thompson, pay grade twenty-six twelve. Be it further resolved that the salaries for said positions are approved in accordance with the pay plans adopted by the Prattville City Council and shall be effective with the pay period which begins on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. So move, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Six? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Six, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, and Resolution Number Six is adopted. Resolution Number Seven is to appoint the city clerk and the city treasurer, finance director for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine quadrinium. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville makes the appointments for the city clerk and the city treasurer, finance director in accordance with section eleven forty-three-three of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended, whereas section eleven forty-three-three states that the city clerk and the city treasurer shall hold office until the next general election and until their successors are elected and qualified. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby appoints Apology Barlow to the position of city clerk for a term of four years as required by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended at pay grade twenty-five-three. And be it further resolved that the City Council hereby appoints Daniel F. Oakley to the position of city treasurer, finance director for a term of four years as required by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended at pay grade twenty-six-eleven. Be it further resolved that the salaries for said positions are approved in accordance with the pay plans adopted by the Prattville City Council. So move, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Seven? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Seven, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, Resolution Number Seven is adopted. Resolution Number Eight is to reappoint Andrew Lee Odom as city attorney for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-nine quadrinium. Counselor Sanders, will you introduce Resolution Number Eight for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Andrew Lee Odom was appointed as city attorney for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four quadrinium or until his successor was duly qualified and appointed in Resolution twenty-twenty-one, page zero twelve, on January fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved to be effective October one, twenty-twenty-five, the following reappointment and duties are hereby made and described. That Andrew Lee Odom is hereby appointed to perform for the City of Prattville all usual and ordinary services as attorney for the City of Prattville involving legal matters usual and customary designated but not limited to attending all meetings of the city council, work sessions, designated committees, and any other necessary meetings and gatherings for the city's purpose, preparing, reviewing, and making recommendations on ordinances, resolutions, policies, agreements, and other legal documents, advising and directing city officials including the mayor, city council members, department heads, city clerk, and other city employees as necessary to conduct the city's legal business for which compensation shall, shall be set forth below. That this appointment shall also include but not be limited to land acquisitions and notices, environmental, real estate matters, board commission issues, bond issues, general legal advice, negotiating franchises, franchise agreements, contracts, redistricting, personnel matters, drafting and reviewing policies, and all other necessary services which were traditionally performed on a billable basis and not considered usual and ordinary. That the city attorney shall receive compensation of twenty-three thousand dollars per year in addition to reimbursement of normal and customary reimbursable expenses. In addition thereto, land acquisitions, annexations, environmental, real estate matters, board and commission issues, bond issues, legal, general legal advice, negotiating franchise agreement, contracts, redistricting, personnel matters, drafting and reviewing policies, and all matters traditionally performed on a billable basis shall continue to be paid at an hourly rate of one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. That said appointment shall be for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-nine quadrinium or until a successor is duly qualified and appointed. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. This shall become effective upon passage of this resolution. So move, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Eight? Mr. Jackson? We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Eight? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Eight, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Resolution Number Eight is adopted. So sorry. Resolution Number Nine is to reappoint Robert E. Riddle doing business as Law Office of Rob Riddle LLC as city attorney for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine quadrinium. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce Resolution Number Nine for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Robert E. Riddle doing business as Law Office of Rob Riddle LLC was appointed as city attorney for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four quadrinium or until his successor was duly qualified and appointed in Resolution twenty-twenty-one, page eleven, on January fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved to be effective October first, two thousand twenty-five, the following reappointment and duties are hereby made and described. That Robert E. Riddle, DBA Law Office of Rob Riddle LLC is hereby reappointed to provide legal services to the City of Prattville consisting of consulting, advising, and/or handling of matters that are reasonably anticipated to lead to potential litigation, advising and directing city officials including mayor, council chambers, department heads, city clerk, and other city employees involving the same as necessary to conduct the city's legal business for which compensation shall be as set forth below. That the city attorney shall receive compensation of twenty-three thousand per year in addition to reimbursement of normal and customary reimbursement expenses. In addition thereto, all contested litigation matters traditionally performed on a billable basis shall continue to be paid in that manner and paid at an hourly rate of one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. That said, appointment shall be for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine quadrinium or until a successor is duly qualified and appointed. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. This shall become effective upon passage of this resolution. So move, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there discussion on Resolution Number Nine? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Nine, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, Resolution Number Nine is adopted. Resolution Number Ten is to name the property at one-two-four West Main Street, Esters. Counselor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Esther Tickner Pratt was a devoted wife and trusted partner of founder Daniel Pratt, and whereas Esther was instrumental in urging Daniel Pratt to remain in Alabama, a decision that sparked economic growth in Atauga County and the broader river region. And whereas Esther's life exemplified partnership and perseverance from her stewardship of family and estate to her active community involvement. And whereas Esther Tickner Pratt's legacy is one of strength, foresight, and quiet determination. And whereas the City of Prattville desires to honor her legacy by naming the former Hancock Whitney Bank Building located at one-twenty-four West Main Street as Esters. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Prattville, that the building located at one-two-four West Main Street is hereby named Esters. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there discussion on Resolution Number Nine? Is there discussion regarding resolution number 10? Mr. Whaley?
Yes, thank you. So I have done a lot of questions, I guess, asking questions this week to determine the process for naming of city property. And I don't know whether there is a specific, apparently there's not a specific ordinance. I just know that I spent quite a few years in three different fire stations, which are now four, a public safety training center, which at the time was in a trailer, walking past and looking at previous council resolutions which were passed naming fire stations after previous fire chiefs. So seeing that every day, that is where I thought property that was owned by the city was, that was the process for naming those, were council resolutions. I had a lot of people ask this week, how did you come up with the name? I just, you know, and I'm telling people, there's some people that asked tonight. I found out what the name of it was when the press release came out. So just being truthful and honest, I don't know what process was used in determining the name. I know that it was decided upon at some point or another, and it is on the physical property. And yes, we have been asked at this point tonight to pass a resolution naming the property. So in my personal opinion, whether there was a policy or procedure or state statute, it's kind of like getting the cart before the horse to name a piece of property and then with the presumption that I'm going to agree with it and then ask me to vote on it at a later date. So that's the only comments that I have.
Is there more discussion regarding resolution number 10? Mr. Jackson?
My constituents have respectfully requested that city council table the naming of these venues until both the elected body and the citizens of Prattville, whose tax dollars funded this project have had the opportunity to provide input. The naming of public facilities is not a mere formality. It is a meaningful act that reflects the shared identity, values, and history of our community. These names will endure for generations, civilizing the collective spirit of Prattville. It is therefore essential that the process be transparent, inclusive, and representative of the people we serve. Unfortunately, both the council and the public were excluded from the conception, planning, and development phases of this city-funded event to move forward with naming these structures without public involvement with disregard the voices of the very citizens who paid, who made this project possible through their hard-earned tax dollars. By tabling this item, the council demonstrates a commitment to good governance, fiscal accountability, and public trust, values that define who we are as a city and as leaders. I urge my colleagues to take this reasonable step to ensure that the process of naming these venues is one that truly honors the people of Prattville and respects transparency.
Is there further discussion regarding resolution number 10? Mr. Chambers?
Yes, ma'am. Just a quick point. I know that we've had some discussion about potential city ordinance. So no matter how this goes tonight, I'd really like to see us put some legislation together moving forward so that we all are on the same page and how things need to go forward.
Is there further discussion regarding resolution number 10? Mr. Jackson, were you hoping to make a motion to table?
Yes, I would make a motion that we table this until we have input from the public and from the council.
Would you like to suggest a date, Mr. Odom, at process?
Yes, Counselor Jackson, you would need to postpone it to a certain date to bring it back up before the council.
And of course, it could be if you use a date, you can absolutely at that date choose to postpone it again if it does not meet the criteria that you are expecting.
So maybe if we maybe look at a month from now, the first meeting in November, I think that would be enough time. I would like to request that we hold or is it table? Andrew, hold. Hold this resolution until the first meeting in November, which will be November the 4th.
We have a motion to hold. Is there a second on the motion to hold? We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold? All in favor of a motion to hold resolution number 10 through the November 4th meeting? Please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? Any, okay. The motion to hold is adopted, and this motion will hold through the November the 4th meeting. Resolution number 11 is to name the outdoor venue adjacent to Esters as the Lyric at Esters. Counselor Chambers, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the original historic Lyric Theater was once a cultural cornerstone in downtown Prattville where legends and many others perform, enriching the community with music and entertainment. And whereas the outdoor venue adjacent to Esters embodies and revives the spirit of the historic Lyric Theater. And whereas this open-air stage and gathering space will pay homage to the legacy and the vibrant history of the original Lyric Theater and will serve as a vibrant hub for performances, committee events, and celebrations. And whereas the revival of the Lyric name celebrates Prattville's rich cultural history while providing a modern space and ensuring that the spirit of those performances continues to inspire future generations to create new memories. And whereas the city of Prattville desires to honor the city's artistic past by naming the outdoor venue adjacent to the Esther as the Lyric at Esters. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the property adjacent to Esters at 124 West Main Street is hereby named the Lyric at Esters. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there discussion regarding item number 11? Mr. Jackson?
As with the previous resolution, I will request that we hold this resolution until the November 4th meeting.
Put it in the form of a motion, please.
I would like to make a motion that we hold this resolution until the November 4th meeting.
We have a motion to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding the motion to hold? Hearing none, all in favor of holding this through November the 4th? Please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? And the resolution is held through November the 4th. This concludes the items on tonight's agenda. At this time, the council will welcome comments from persons present. We ask that anyone who wishes to speak will please line up in the middle aisle and sign your name and address on the podium. You will have three minutes to address the council. We ask that you state your name and address first and then begin speaking.
John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace, I'm going to the Robinsons' house. And you know, you gave a lot of, waived a lot of fees for Owen's Corning, which is, as they said, a billion-dollar business. I think that perhaps you should think about waiving the fees for the Robinsons and take each case that comes up on a, you know, case-by-case basis. But you know, that, to me, that would help a little bit. Would help them. That's, that was a lot of fees. So since you're doing that for a billion-dollar business, I think you can do that for a family here that's been established for a long time and trying to better their place. Also, Councilman Whaley and Councilman Jackson, thank you so much about the budget. You guys tried, I appreciate that. I do think that it was much too short a time. Very much so. I think there needs to be a lot more input and meaning and that we can ask questions, you know. You get the questions, but sometimes it's better for a person to be able to come up and talk to you and get the feedback. Yes, it will be long, but you could, you could break it up. So I really, really think the next budget needs to have that, needs to be prepared again sooner. I think three weeks is not enough time. Lastly, thank you, thank you, thank you for holding on the name. I really appreciate that because I think citizens should have had an input, and I think you should have had an input. It just happened, all of a sudden, it's named. And we won't talk about the elephant in the room, but we know how it was named. So anyway, thank you.
Yes, or Mr. White, please come forward. State your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Once again, Reverend Dr. L. White, 621 West Fourth Street. You know the good book, and I hear y'all always praying, and I hope we pray into the same God. The Book of 1 Corinthians, the seventh chapter, the 21st verse say, "Were you a slave when you were called? Don't let it trouble you. Although you can gain your freedom, do so. For the one who was a slave when called to faith in the Lord is the Lord's free person. Similarly, the one who was free when Christ is, who was free when called is Christ's slave. You were brought at a price. Do not become slaves of human beings. Brothers and sisters, each person as responsible to God should remain in the situation they were when called, when God called them." We've served the same God yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And for someone to get up here and say, oh, we should, we should hold it to, not to the standards of the day when you're talking about naming convention. God never intended nobody to be a slave. But yet, we want to name it after a slave on. You know, the, under micro, under microaggression, one of the other insults is microinvalidation. Statements that dismiss or invalidate someone's experiences, such as saying, "I don't see color," or "positive action," is racist. For you to get up here and say, well, we ain't holding the same standards of yesterday, today, it should have been the same standards. Slavery shouldn't have existed. You wouldn't want your children a slave. You wouldn't want your family member a slave. Just like you wouldn't, just like family members of this city were dressed as KKK members and holding meetings over there at the golf club. But yet, we can get up here and talk about what his intent is. The intent is for you to serve all the people and not some of the people. So what did she do? She did a lot for this community. What community? She didn't do it for the, our, my community as slaves. She didn't do a lot? So how can you get up here and justify that and then insult us as the, what you say matter and what we say don't matter? And I served for this country. 25 years, 11 months, 11 days. Last time I checked, didn't serve one day. Just took, took, took. So I ask you, before you, before you go to a naming convention, look at the whole community. Don't look at just parts of the community. Could that bring back old wounds? Thank you. And also, oh, by the way, we get updates on Noon Park. Why we can't get an update on North Island Park?
Is there anyone further who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am. Come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address us.
Jackie Nick, 706 Running Brook Circle. I want to state that during the budget work session, I really do appreciate all of the questions. It was actually a very productive budget work session, the most productive that I have seen. I really appreciate Councilman Whaley and Councilman Jackson, but all of you had questions, and I do appreciate that. I am disappointed. I did not want the budget passed as written. However, I do want to hold you accountable. For those of you who had questions, who, those of you who had issues with the way things are written, do not let up. As has been stated multiple times, this is a living document. So please keep looking into, you know, for instance with the library, get that report, do that. Mr. Whaley, you had questions about education and EMA and so on and so forth. Please keep driving at this. We need you to represent us. And when you have questions, we certainly have questions. And we don't need to just pass this and be, trust us and we'll take care of it. Keep digging, keep searching, keep looking at ways to make it better and to serve all. And I do want to echo that I very much appreciate holding on the naming of the venue. And I do very much appreciate not appointing, reappointing the board members for the library board because, as Mr. Jackson had pointed out, there wasn't a public, there wasn't a, an announcement to let the public know about whether or not, you know, to be able, to even have a chance to be on there. So just continue to keep looking and digging, keep asking questions. We're asking questions. I am heartened in that when I see you asking questions, that means you're listening to us, that when we're communicating with you and sending you emails, talking to you personally, whatever, we like to see that reflected. And I know it doesn't always go, you know, that today didn't go my way, but I appreciate the effort and I appreciate that you keep doing that and keep digging. So thank you very much.
Is there anyone further who wishes to speak this evening? Hearing none, we will move into our closing comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Just want to thank the ones who supported the budget. I know there was a, there was a lag in getting the budget to the council here, but I also know that the, the department heads had reached out to all of y'all as committee chairs and, and there had been communication as well. Our staff has worked very hard on this. There was a lot of delays in it, as mentioned earlier, because of the, some of the election and because of a lot of public information requests. And a lot of, all of that takes a lot of time. So one of the things, we move into our next quadrinium, I will again ask for us all to be professional and communicate, communicate, communicate. I know I've given directives to the department heads and as issues come up, whether it's something be on the budget on the agenda from the budget or something that needs to be amended from that budget, to reach out to the chair of that department and also include every department, every councilors up here on that email. So hopefully that'll be one way of including the, opening up the lines of communication. We do have some opportunities on some other boards as well. I know our city clerk has put out notifications many times. If you have a name or suggestion of a person, please ask them to get on our city website. I was able to pull it up here pretty easily. And you go to the city website and it's up underneath the city clerk's office there. And it just says briefly here, "Applications are accepted throughout the year" by the city clerk's office. Will be maintained on file for consideration when appointments are due. Please submit the completed city Prattville application and the board. But we have had some folks that wanted to serve on very specific boards because of their skill set. And we've had other ones who just wanted to serve the community as a whole. So again, I do appreciate council's work tonight and I look forward as we move through the rest of this quadrinium and into the next. Thank you.
Counselor Sanders, any closing comments? Counselor Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. Before I begin my comments on tonight, I would like to say, I would like to say that we need to hold the victims and families of the incident that happened in Montgomery in our prayers. They're our neighbors. I know oftentimes Montgomerys tend to, Montgomerys tend to be frowned upon, but that's our neighbor. They're 10, 15 minutes away. So what affects them also affects us. It's very unfortunate. I made a post the other day talking about how it's unfortunate where the leadership over there is being blamed for that incident. But we all know it's a societal issue. A lot of lack of parental issues, concerns, you know, parental involvement. I think they said that most of these young people were teenagers. And so we need to be mindful of what's going on there and we need to be intentional moving forward. Since that incident, I've received multiple phone calls about us having a entertainment, an entertainment district. And I have repeatedly told everyone that's reached out via text or call to say, it has not been discussed with me. it has not been discussed with me. I don't know if it's been discussed with you all, but that's not in the plans. And I will not be voting for an entertainment district where we'll have, you know, open carry in our community. Again, we know that alcohol and underage drinking could be a bad mix, and we definitely don't want what happened over there to happen here. And I don't want us to get too comfortable in Prattville because we are not immune, you know, that we are not immune from that happening. Trust me, we working, I work and see it every day. So I know what we're dealing with, our guys back there, our first responders, they see it. So we're not immune, and I think we need to be proactive with possibly updating our curfew. We may need to look at amending it. So I think, I think, you know, we have one in place. I think it's currently 11:00 to 6:00, 11:00 to 5:00 a.m., but we may need to move forward, looking at our curfew and making sure these young people are not walking around and roaming our community by themselves without their parents. But let's lift up Montgomery and have a holiday coming up. We got Columbus Day slash Indigenous People's Day coming up, so I hope everyone enjoys their time off.
Counselor Jacks, I'm sorry, Counselor Chambers, any closing comments? Counselor Merrick?
No ma'am.
Counselor Whaley?
So first of all, there are a lot of people who want to, I guess, Monday morning quarterback or critique a lot of the work that we do as council members, and some people think, hey, you go up there and you're there for, well, I would say an hour or two, but sometimes it's three, twice a month, and that's it. I can assure you that I put a lot of time and effort into reviewing packets thoroughly, looking at backup documents, asking questions. It is a lot more than two, two or three-hour meetings a month. There's a lot of work that goes into the thought process behind looking at making best decisions for our community. And I know there are people who were upset with the vote to pass a budget, but I would point out that it's been stated multiple times, it's a living, breathing document. It can be changed. We have amended budgets in the past, and we can amend budgets in the future. I will restate like I did earlier, it is hamstringing to our departments and our department heads and our employees who are trying to provide the services that we look for them to provide when we can't have a budget for them to do that. I understand there was a spending resolution, you know, that's gotten us over to this point, but that only takes you so far. There are departments with needed equipment, needed capital purchases, things that they have to have in order to perform the responsibilities and to provide the services that we expect for them to provide. So I don't, you know, I had some questions about the budget. I still have some questions about the budget. I will, I will continue to work on those issues, to work on, you know, those areas where we can improve. I do hope that in the future, we have a lot more time to review the budget. I'm not opposed to some type of an open town hall where people have the opportunity to have dialogue with us, to share their concerns, and hear answers from counselors. And I know some people frown upon that and say, well, that's going to take, you know, three more hours. I don't know. Maybe we split it up. Maybe we have general budget one night, and then maybe the next week, or a week after, we have another meeting where we look at our enterprise fund budgets. But there's got to be a way that the people in the community's voices can be heard. We can hear it and then we can respond. We may not, we may not always disagree. You may not get the answer you want, even in a town hall setting, but if you've had the opportunity to voice your opinion and hear an answer from your elected representative, I think it goes a long way with our community. Thank you.
Counselor Strickus not with us this evening. The next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, October the 21st, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nays, we are adjourned.